Good morning, Supervisors. Dear wise and loving Father, please let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for many and abundant blessings. In the Scripture, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities. Since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and other justices, therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for the assembled council, I am asking that you would graciously grant them a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. With this, I pray, amen. Thank you.
Amen.
My pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order. At 1:30, outside council will be calling in on item number 24, so if that comes up before that, we'll delay it. And also, since it's going to be a long meeting, we're probably going to take a recess at about 12:30. Next up would be call to the public. I have two. You'll each have three minutes to speak. You'll get a warning light. And then if anybody wants to speak after these two, we'll let them go as well. First up, I have Mary Rodriguez.
Good morning. I'm Mary Rodriguez from Casa Grande. Good morning, Chairman Surti and the board. Today, I comment to point out what might be an insignificant pivot point in putting together planning processes that conduct our county elections. Last month, Arizona counties got together to identify how to incorporate recounts into the election process without significantly increasing the ability to get results out in a timely manner. A dilemma exists because throughout the complicated world of county elections, hard deadlines exist already, and any recounts which take time, a lot of time, have to fit in between those already existing deadlines. The framework is rigid, and adding a lot more work inside an already overcomplicated structure is challenging. What a perfect time for Panal County to stand up and lead the way in reforming the overall way elections are conducted here in our county. An additional estimate of at least two weeks, at a minimum, has been identified by the gathered counties as needed to conduct recounts that have to be squeezed into an already overtaxed, overly complicated process. Election results already are overly delayed and take weeks now to get a final result. The whole process is overly complex and too costly, as it is what a great time to look at reforming the whole process. If election security is the main goal, always sacrificing that goal to add more and more tasks makes no sense. To remedy this, counties across the nation are reforming and going back to what worked for over a century by putting hand count processes back in place, which cut through all the complex technical problems. They are cheaper, decentralized, which automatically adds security. Instead of managing software, finicky tabulators, problematic ballot boxes, hackable poll books, let alone allowing outside vendors access to the votes where citizens can't even see what's being counted, you would once again go back to managing precinct locations and training volunteer and paid citizenry to conduct hand count activities. This is stepping back to a simpler and safer practice. Hand counts work. They are cheaper, they are less complicated, and more secure, and need to be given a serious look by our county. It is more difficult to stuff a ballot box physically with 5,000 ballots in 100 locations than it is to electronically move a decimal place over two places to disenfranchise thousands of voters or to switch up a zip code, which happened, with the flick of a button that reroutes thousands of mail-in ballots. Our goals should always be easy to vote but hard to cheat. Our county could lead the way in these types of reform and highlight across the state and nation a simpler way that is doable. We need a hand count effort put on your agenda to examine and understand the existing processes that are currently being used in the states for these kind of reforms. Thank you.
Bob Doughty.
I was involved in a small building for myself. It's a 30 by 60, just a steel building.
Need to know basically your address as well.
Okay, I'm Bob Doughty. Excuse me. I was trying to get a permit to put up a metal building. I did everything they asked me to, and here's what happens. And I'm just going to read what I put in the paper. Panal County's building permit department needs cleaning up. They add regulations and requirements and fees before you finish what was first asked for. They're working for themselves, not the citizens. In the process, I did everything I was told to do, and then they would add another something else. They would add another something. Some of the things they were adding were duplications of what was already done, and this always already required another fee. We need to look into what's going on. It seems like they're working for the government, not for us. That's all I have to say. Any questions?
We can't respond to you at this time. When we're all done, we may direct staff to talk to you.
Thank you, sir.
Let's keep.
Noel Rec from Eloy. I couldn't attend the last meeting as I was committed to the Mayor's Reading Club of Casa Grande, a program I would highly recommend to any municipality and citizen. I did watch the video and was puzzled by comments from those supporting Sheriff Lamb and his expenditures versus comments from Sheriff Lamb himself. The first speaker spoke to the importance of free speech in the First Amendment relating it to the article detailing the expenditures. Insinuating the supposed news about the expenditures will hurt Sheriff Lamb's candidacy. Sheriff Lamb asked the board to study if call to the public comments regarding candidates such as himself could be considered electioneering and thus banned, protecting him from the political social activists he believes are out to get him. Unbelievable. Which is it? Freedom of speech or censorship? Another speaker anointing Sheriff Lamb as America's sheriff and our next senator gave vague references to President Biden's Infrastructure Act as accounted to Sheriff Lamb's expenditures, further stating it's only 5% of the money, and that money isn't meant for popcorn and magazines. They're there to be punished. Sheriff Lamb conversely stated the county has many positive programs in place to prepare reentry to society and decrease recidivism. He stated 5% of the money in question is reasonable to protect the welfare of the inmates as he defines it, a loose and questionable definition at best. The expenditures are inappropriate and for no other reason, appearances sake. It's unseemly on its face, something that would spur those costly information requests he spoke of. Are there no other accounts that could be utilized? Could that $105,000 truck recently approved have been reconsidered? Supervisor Miller, you said you hope Sheriff Lamb's explanation would be satisfactory to the citizens. It isn't for me. All this stuff that we can do what we want to do, constitutional sheriff, is just too much, and I join others in asking the county to monitor, audit, and prevent this type of expenditure. Now, my primary reason for speaking today. The last time I spoke, I was chastised by a speaker for bringing further division and bringing the Republican effort to force a government shutdown to the fore and asking the board to weigh in. I do see the harmful division, the division within the Republican Party where nine House members are calling the shots. With no contingency plan in place, it took almost three weeks to pick a new speaker who won't offend Donald Trump and is nothing more than a more presentable Jim Jordan. They can't govern themselves, let alone the nation. Now, here we are, just a few days away from another possible shutdown. Once again, I call upon you to notify Representatives Biggs and Crane, who are at the center of this mess, that Panal County does not want a shutdown. Perhaps they'll listen to you. They won't even answer the phone for us. Of course, it's your prerogative, but please advocate for yourselves and the citizens of Panal County. Thinking of contingencies, I'm wondering what the county has in mind should a shutdown occur. May I ask the board, Mr. Lou perhaps, to address that question? If I could just take one more second, I do want to commend Attorney Volkmer for his Panal County Strong Program event that he's put together in Coolidge. It's a great thing.
Anyone else?
Roberta Ravelas, resident of Gold Canyon. At the last Board of Supervisors meeting, Sheriff Mark Lamb's hypocrisy and disdain for the Constitution were on full display. Disregarding his three and a half, ongoing three-year campaign of electioneering as a political prop for the insurrectionist and now criminally indicted former president, the sheriff candidate for U.S. Senate had the unmitigated gall to tell you, Board of Supervisors and the county attorney, to muzzle the three minutes of call to the public remarks by me and others. Three years of electioneering threatened by three minutes of call to the public. How dare we criticize Mark Lamb's complicity with the leader of the January 6 violent attack against the constitutionally mandated peaceful transfer of presidential power? To put this disagreement in context, let me remind you that the sheriff's various intimidation attempts have occurred over the past year targeting me during calls to the public and other remarks by others from the public. An intimidation campaign that came into focus when he approached me in this room and shouted at me and another member of the public that we were, in his words, "destroying our country." I welcome the discussion of who is destroying our country as the sheriff struggles to escape the political hellhole of lies he has dug for himself. Mr. Chairman, everyone's constitutional right to free speech is a precious right that must be defended. I refuse to be bullied by the sheriff's contrived theatrical imagery, the big white cowboy hat, the shiny badge, the battlefield vest, the threatening weapon at his hip. I will not submit to Sheriff Lamb's attempts at censoring my yes activist speech, and I would hope others, regardless of partisan affiliation, regardless of their vulnerability, will not allow themselves to be silenced. If you members of the board and the county attorney attempt to rewrite the rules of the call to the public to accommodate Sheriff Lamb's electioneering sensitivities, I challenge you to place the topic on the agenda for open debate. Yes, let's have discussion of who's destroying our country. Which party is refusing to accept the outcome of their elections, submitting false slates of presidential electors, conducting so-called election audits based on contrived conspiracies, promoting the physical violence against political adversaries, and who is seeking to limit the freedom of speech by yes activists committed to the painful truth? On this Dia de los Muertos, may the big lie die. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll close call to the public, and I see that someone has already got with Mr. Doughty, and they're helping him, so thank you. County managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just have a couple of announcements and a video to share. First, our Peralta Regional Park is going to be closed this Saturday to the public. We're doing an employees and families picnic in the park, and our employees and their family members can show up anytime between 11:00 and 3:00. You don't have to RSVP, but for those that have, it just helps to guarantee you a meal ticket. I think we have about 215 employees already RSVP'd for that. And then our Development Services has announced that they're extending hours on Monday through Thursday to help for contractors and citizens that need to come in either before or after work, so they'll be open one-stop shop from 7:00 to 6:00, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And then on Fridays, they still will have the inspections going for building inspectors and for quality assurance inspectors, but the one-stop shop will not be open on Friday. And then we wanted to, or on Fridays, and then we wanted to thank, take the opportunity to thank our volunteers and citizens that help keep our roads clean, and they do it through an Adopt a Road program, so we wanted to highlight and honor them this morning. And I believe our clerk of the board has a video queued up for that.
Today, we would like to present you with this certificate in recognition of your five years of volunteering with the Panal County Adopt a County Road program. You have been an essential part of our organization's journey and success. We are totally grateful for your dedication and passion you have shown. Thank you for meeting with us today.
You're welcome. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Yeah. We want to let the volunteers know that we do appreciate them. They do take the time out of their days to come out and pick up a lot of the litter that is along the highway. We started with our five-year groups who wanted to bring them out to the roadways. We are going to do recognition every five years, so we do have our five years, our 10 years, our 15, our 20 years. Each of our groups is going to get a sign underneath their actual Adopt a County Road sign. We do offer it for schools, for individuals, for churches, any type of organization that does come out.
We're the Entrata del Oro homeowners.
The Saddle Brook Pickleball Association.
Ricky Molinar, he's our highway angel.
They saw a need to clean up the road on the way in because there was a lot of trash, and they wanted to make the place look better.
Most of our folks are retired, and they, you know, are community conscious.
That's neat. We'll be doing it for a long time.
Ricky was killed in an accident on this stretch of the highway, and we wanted to remember him in a good way. Ricky was a gentle giant, and he touched many lives. We just get together, family, friends, and remember his life.
By them helping out and collecting all of this additional litter that alleviates work from our maintenance yards, and then they can actually focus on other things that they do have to do around the county.
It's fun. It's a good way to meet your neighbors, and it's nice to make, you know, the world around you look a little nicer. A lot of garbage accumulates, you know? It flies off the back of the trucks. People throw it out the window for whatever reason I don't understand.
Only good can come of it. Our environment is so bad right now, we're amazed, the stuff that we pick up when we're picking up trash. People need to be more alert to it.
And a clean community is a good community.
They can go to panal.gov, click on our Development Service website, and there is an application on there under Public Works for Adopt a County Road.
It feels good. It's nice to be recognized. It's always good to get reinforcement that, you know, we're doing something that matters and makes a difference.
This is good for our group to get the five-year recognition.
And I hope it'll encourage more people to want to pitch in and help.
That's all I have.
Yeah, we'd all like to thank all the volunteers too, not only in that group, but just tens of thousands of hours of volunteerism that saved the county, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. If we didn't have them, you know, we wouldn't be as great a county as we are, so. Any district reports from any of the supervisors? We'll start over here on the left.
There is an event out at Atesa Racetrack on November 10th for veterans, so if you'd like to attend, there'll be some food trucks and different things out there in celebration of Veterans Day.
Mike? Jeff McClure.
I'll be in Arizona City on Friday afternoon, 3 to 5, at the Arizona City Fire District Office. Kent Volkmer, Dana Lewis, myself. I think possibly Lieutenant Kinsvader will be there to talk about issues in Arizona City.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's just outside my district, but in Randolph, I just want to give the county praise and Mr. Miller for following up and getting the fire hydrants installed in Randolph. We're making some progress down there, so I'm very happy to see. It took some time, but it's important that they have these fire hydrants to help put out fires down there.
And from my district, I just, there's already been some press releases on it, but I just want to give an update on the Bureau of Land Management's final decision to create a recreation area up around the ghost town and get rid of the illegal camping. In about one month, all of the illegal campers will then be given one month to vacate, and then it'll be a one-year process to fence the entire area in, build restrooms, parking lots, and it will, it's going to just benefit the whole area and make everything safer and protect the environment and the desert. So, thank you, Bureau of Land Management, and everybody that worked on that. They didn't just, you know, things like this don't just happen with a stroke of a pen. This is years into making, and they went through all the process, so thanks to everyone for their patience so that everything can get in order.
Purchasing Division report. Tiara or Angie?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the board. I'm Tiara Peterson, your purchasing manager for Panal County. This is your purchasing division report for November 1st, 2023. First, the board has requested to approve the following contract amendments. RFP 222426 for trauma counseling. We recommend approval of amendment number two to exercise the optional extension period from November 18th, 2023 through November 17th, 2024 with E. Therapy LLC. This contract is used by the Health Department, Public Health Department, excuse me. RFP 231527 for vehicle and equipment parts repair and services. We recommend approval of an amendment to exercise the optional extension period through October 25th, 2024 with the following suppliers. Dreamline Collision Center, Earnhardt Chevrolet, Earnhardt Ford Sales, House Right and Sons LLC, Napa Day Auto Supply, Panal Auto Glass LLC, Reparto Velace, Robert Horn Ford LLC, Rodeo QCC Inc., DBA Rodeo, Rodeo Dodge, RWC Group, Suns Ray Machinery LLC, and Watson Chevrolet. This contract is used by the Fleet Department. Next, the board has requested to approve the following purchase request per Panal County Procurement Code Section PC 1-350, governing competition in practicable purchases over $100,000. An amount of $250,000 for Arizona Capital Representation Project for capital appeals representation used by the Public Defense Services Office. An amount of $120,000 for David Kepphart for indigent criminal and capital representation used by the Public Defense Services Office. An amount of $120,000 for David Teal for indigent defense criminal capital representation used by the Public Defense Services Office. Next, the board has requested to approve the following change orders per Panal County Procurement Code Section PC 1-502, governing change orders that exceed minimum thresholds for PO 247085 with Dibble and Associates, a change amount of $955,554.60 for a new total of $1,982,860.65 for the Apache Junction Regional Basin Weeks Wash Watershed used by Development Services, the Public Works Division. Next, the board is hereby notified of the following cooperative purchases made. PO 250605 with Protivity Inc. an amount of $183,356 for internal audit services used by the clerk of the board. And finally, the board is requested to approve the following cooperative purchases. Requisition 168919 with Midway Chevrolet, an amount of $1,551,442.50 for Tahoe Patrols for PCSO used by the Fleet Services Department. And requisition 168921, also with Midway Chevrolet, an amount of $585,921.4, and this is a correction, it says four Tahos, but it should say eight, also for Fleet Services. So, the recommended motion today is to approve as presented with the correction to requisition 168921 for eight Tahos and not four, and that concludes your purchasing division report for November 1st, 2023.
Any questions or discussion? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item, the purchasing division report with the correction of eight Tahos instead of four on the agenda item.
Second that. I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And that carries. Thank you, Tiara. Consent agenda items, everything will be approved with one vote unless anyone likes to pull anything.
Chairman.
We've got number five.
We have number five first. And this is the county attorney's diversion program. Kent Volkmer's not here yet. Who will be doing this instead?
Chairman.
They want to continue it.
So, we're going to continue it, okay. So, do you have a motion to continue that?
Mr. Chair, I move we move to continue the diversion program, program to November 15th, 2023.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? See, in my mind, I already had it continued, so, okay. Now, back to the consent agenda. If anybody would like to pull anything, I am going to pull items number D, AM, and AN. Would anyone else like to pull anything? And that includes members of the public.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item E, is it Edward?
Okay, E. Mr. Ravelas.
Mr. Chairman, I'd request pulling items F, G, and H.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion except for those pulled items.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve consent items A through AP minus D, AM, AN, E, F, G, and H.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And that carries. All right. Well, let's start out with a pleasant one, with item number D, which is my appointment of a P&amp;Z member, and we're all up here so grateful to the folks that serve on our boards, especially P&amp;Z, because a lot of times, they work just as hard, especially on the day of the meeting. Their meetings are all day long, and they don't really get compensation. They take a day off of work or for whatever they do and drive from all corners of the county, so, item number D, we approve it first, and then I'll give him his. Yeah, so I think that's how we would do that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number D as presented.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? And we've just appointed Frank Devia from Dudleyville to serve as one of my two, and if he'll come forward, then we'll give him his, and then he'll be sworn in afterwards, We'll do AM, and this is, AM and AN are both Panal County Sheriff's Office. If you want to address both of them, we could do them both together. I'd just like to know more about these. One of them is regarding the shooting range. How's it working? I mean, it's been up about a year now. Any problems, any positives? And the other one is some collaboration with an agreement, so if you could explain those.
Yes, sir. Matthew Thomas, Chief Deputy, Panal County Sheriff's Office. Chairman, Supervisors, item A. Item AM, I'll start with that one. That is a, that's an agreement with Mesa PD and essentially agreeing for them to provide and allow us to train up at their facility, specifically vehicle training is what we were looking for. But we broadened that a little bit so we can do firearms training if need be, or building clearing, or any of that stuff at their facility and have use of their facility and have access to their instructors as well. Item AN, that is the shooting range. And we've had, I want to say we have three, possibly four outside agencies now. And as you guys know, you approved that shooting range for law enforcement use. We've had several law enforcement agencies that have signed the IGA, started using it. It's working extremely well. It's a good central location. As the valley grows and starts to push out our way, you guys are very familiar with the loss of land and the ability for law enforcement specifically to have training sites. So, this has worked out well. We've had multiple classes out there for PCSO. We've had the other agencies able to use it to qualify their people to do firearms training. And so, it's done exactly what it was designed to do.
Has there been any disturbance to neighbors?
We had one complaint last week, actually. But when we narrowed that down, he was in Anthem. And he essentially said, "I was in the war and gunfire bothers me." And so, we had a discussion and I said, I explained to him the process that we went through for the location of that land, the noise studies, everything that we did. And he said, "Yeah, I'm kind of just old and grumpy. And thank you for answering me and thank you for explaining what you did." Because I told him the sound study specifically, because he was, he was, his view was that it sounded like we were shooting right next to his house. And we actually think he may have confused our range with the range that is right off a hunt highway next to the hospital there, which is actually Coolidge PD's. We're not sure, but we didn't argue the point. We just said, "Hey, you know, we operate during these hours. This is how we operate. These are the studies that show we're within the boundaries that we can operate." And he was satisfied with that. Outside of that, we've had none.
Okay. Any questions? So, I'll ask for a motion on those two. We can do them both together, right? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve both items AM and AN as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And those carry. Thank you. Item number E, Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we have the County Attorney's Office explain how this clarifies or changes the procedures that we've been using in the past?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board, Scott Johnson, County Attorney's Office. The purpose of this resolution is to further clarify the board's responsibilities with respect to state statute, because this board elected to contract with the State Board of Equalization to conduct hearings on petition, petitions for property class, classification evaluations. Because of that, there are certain rules that apply to that process and the appeal rights that are attached to that. So, this basically, this resolution clarifies what the board's responsibilities are because it elected to contract with the State Board of Equalization to hear those petitions. So, we had in instance, a couple of board meetings ago where a citizen came in to try to hear an appeal and the board was not situated for that because of this. And there was a little bit of confusion, Supervisor Kavanaugh, as to what the board's responsibilities were. And so, I think my boss, Chris Keller, elected with the clerk to try to clarify your responsibilities with regard to that. This resolution does that and basically states that should an appeal occur, the decision of the State Board of Equalization hearing officer that this board is contracted with is final. And then appeal rights for that person would, the remedy would be to go to the Superior Court as opposed to coming to the board. So, this resolution clarifies that and your responsibilities with regard to those types of petitions.
Any more discussion or questions? Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did you say the Superior Court? Or I thought it was Tax Court where they went next to.
Excuse me, excuse me, Tax Court. We're talking about, we are talking about taxes. So, you're right, it would be the Tax Court, which is a division of the Superior.
Okay, I get that. To be clear, it's the Tax Court.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve item number E as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
You got that? Natasha? Okay.
Yes, Chairman.
Is that two nays or one nay?
I heard one nay.
Okay.
Yes, the motion passes four to one. That's one nay.
Thank you.
Okay, item number F, I'll let Mr. Ravelas present this? Or do we just want to discuss? This is regarding the audit, and I see that some of the independent auditors are here if we have any questions.
Roberto Ravelas, resident of Gold Canyon. Mr. Chairman, not a question, but really as a concerned taxpayer and concerned about some of the weaknesses revealed in the recent audits, I encourage the audit committee to seek additional resources as they seem fit to complete their important task and close off, for example, the Treasurer's Office, failure to balance the county checkbook, I believe over a period of six years. And so, to close those vulnerabilities to abuse, I support and encourage the audit committee in completing its tasks and asking for help when it needs it from the rest of the management. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are you comfortable with us voting on all three of those at once?
Yes, indeed. I think they have wonderful charter and bylaws, and I'm pleased to support the approval of F, G, and H.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve F, F, G, and H as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that carries. Thank you, auditors, for coming today. Okay, well, now, resource, recess the regular meeting and go into flood control. And flood control also has a. Is there a motion on it?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number A as presented.
For the flood control, this is a purchasing report. If we can have the purchasing division staff to come up and present.
Back then.
Okay. Just leave that hanging.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tiara Peterson, your purchasing manager for Pinal County. This is your flood control purchasing division report for November 1st, 2023. The board has requested to approve the following contract award, IFB 243225 for Superstition Basin Flood Control Project. We recommend Action Direct LLC DBA Red Point Contracting be awarded a contract in the bid amount of $3,266,010.65 with a contingency amount of $326,601.8. This contract will be used by Development Services. And that concludes your flood control purchasing division report for November 1st, 2023.
Any questions? I'll ask for a motion on that.
I have a question.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this, is this for a study or is this for actual, like, stick and brick? There's going to be actual work done to reconstruct the flood area or do we know?
I believe that it's actual work.
He's coming up from behind you.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. Joshua Plum, Flood Controls District. This is for the construction of the basin in Apache Junction. This is for the actual work.
Okay. I wanted to bring that up. I thought it was because we spend a lot of money on studies, but this is actual work that's going to be done to help reconstruct that area.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that answer. If no more discussion, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number one of the Flood Control District Board of Directors.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Now, I'll ask for a motion on the consent.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number A as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And passes. Now, I will recess that and go into Public Health Meeting.
Just for clarity, Chairman, we're going to close that Flood Control District?
I'm sorry, what?
We're going to close it, not recess it. We're going to close the Flood Control District.
Close it completely, yes. Meeting's closed. And now, open up the Health Department Meeting. And it is consent items. Does anyone have a motion on it?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items on the public, Pinal County Public Health Services District Board, item A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. I am going to close that meeting and go back to our regular meeting. Item number nine, discussion approval, disapproval of the risk assessment for fiscal year '23. Eric Groen and Matt Busby.
Good morning. Thanks for having us today. The item here that we're discussing is the internal audit risk assessment process that we went through over the last six months. If you'll go to the next slide. Thank you. I can do it myself, even better. Wanted to just discuss some of the, first of all, maybe just discuss a little bit of the process that we went through for the risk assessment, and then we can discuss some key themes. Obviously, these key themes then lead to the next item, which is the internal audit plan for, for the next three years. So, first of all, our risk assessment process is extremely robust. We do that every three years. It starts with a survey, and that survey is distributed to all of the leaders, including the department leads. From there, we narrow that group down and we do very specific interviews. So, of course, we interviewed all of you, or in some cases, your representative. We interview all key stakeholders in county management. We also interview all of the electeds. From those interviews, you can see, from those surveys and those interviews, you can see some risk assessment themes that took note. So, some things related to IT infrastructure. I'm not going to go through each one of these bullet points, but I think the most important one here is the county is going to be going through a very significant process to evaluate and update their ERP system. ERP more generally refers to the accounting system that you have. And that's going to be a large project coming up here in the next three years. You know, one of the, I'll also just note in one of these, in these themes, and I got some, some really good comments and feedback throughout our risk assessment process, that maybe the risks were worded, you know, maybe just a little bit negative. And so, obviously, this is a very intense and a difficult process. I think next year, the next time we go through this process, we'll word it just a little bit differently so that we can also focus a little bit more on the positives, although we did hear quite a few positives, too. That being said, you can see here in the IT infrastructure, we also have a lot of applications that will be moving to the cloud. That will be an important area for us to keep our eyes on here over the next three years. You can see here that that funding obviously will be important. Maintaining some key folks obviously is a concern that many of you had and another area that we will be talking about as we work into our internal audit plan. No surprise, the elections process was top of mind for many people in management and, of course, in the county. We were aware that there was a third-party review that was completed. And you will see in our next, in the internal audit plan, we will plan to do some follow-up in that areas. Obviously, everyone was concerned that we have a very robust system and that we do our very best to have alleviated some of the issues that happened in the last election process. The next one is succession planning and leadership. Again, you know, consistent with some of the things that we heard as it relates to IT infrastructure, you know, making sure that our key people are here for the duration, making sure that we are promoting managers and getting them the right training that they need internally, making sure that we have succession plans top of mind for, for many of the folks. And then also capital projects, obviously, in a growing community like this, in a growing county like this, there's going to be a lot of building. Want to make sure that that is consistent with plans, making sure that we're using our money and our buildings as wise as possible. So, those are just some key themes that, like I said, we heard from the surveys and our interviews and wanted to bring those things forward. The next slide should be, oh, I'm in charge, of course I am. A couple more themes here. So, data governance, also a very important item that was noted typically or right now, currently, data is managed at the department level. So, looking to make sure that we are more consistent across the county in the way that we use and analyze our data. Another one related to just constituent relations and providing timely, efficiently, and effectively in a growing county, that certainly is not a surprise as well. Another area was related to community development. Again, another third-party reviewed this, and so, we'll be following up with them to make sure that those recommendations were taken into consideration in those action plans, just like we do any other report that is done by either internal audit or a third-party. And then finally, just policies and procedures as the, as the county changes and grows, this is something that we always need to keep our eye on and make sure that they're updated. And those access to policies has actually taken a significant uptick, you know, noted some of the efforts related to the website and many of those things. So, getting those policies and procedures up is a, is a very good initiative that is ongoing. I think that concludes my thoughts on the risk assessment itself. Obviously, the second part of a risk, the meat and potatoes of a risk assessment is where it then ends up intersecting with our internal audit plan, which we will discuss next. So, I think the, we call for a review or an approval or disapproval of the risk assessment specifically. So, I would ask for that. First of all, entertain any questions and then ask you for your approval.
Are there any questions? If not, we will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item number nine as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. On to item number 10, which is Mr. Groen again about.
Yes, thank you. So, consistent with the themes that we identified in the risk assessment process, the next step is to determine the work that the internal audit department is going to do. And we do that, first of all, with a plan that includes a three-year plan. So, we're planning things out well in advance of the things that we're doing, consistent with the risk assessment. But then, as you know, we also update that plan on an annual basis. Things certainly can change every year. Some of the times, the timing of things moves around a little bit based on, you know, the critical areas that we're looking at. And so, you can see the internal audit plan here. At the top of the list was that ERP assistance. Again, knowing that it's a critical piece of infrastructure, especially as it relates to accounting, the internal audit department, as well as the Audit Committee, wants to make sure that that is a really important piece and we, and we have appropriate oversight over that. We will do that consistent with when the implementation is done. So, they do have a robust process as far as selection and then implementation and then then we will be doing our reviews consistent with those different parts of the project. I talked about data governance already. That's something, I apologize, that should say 2024, as opposed to 2025. Again, we're going to be looking at the best practices across the different departments, and trying to bring those forward, so that we can do even better data analysis and data governance, making sure that that data is accurate. We, as I mentioned, we, there was a third-party audit, or third-party review done of the elections. We will be following up on that, just to make sure that we're clear, that is not necessarily an audit or review, but it is a follow-up. Like I said, we have follow-up procedures for all of the audits and the reviews that are done throughout the county. This one in particularly, we just moved up, given the importance and the timeliness. Similar to the community development, third-party follow-up, we'll be doing that shortly thereafter. You can see there, in 2025, we're looking to look at the constituent relations and the service delivery model. We, again, do a mid-cycle risk assessment update that is different than the comprehensive process that we just went through, and which you just approved, but we validate that nothing has changed. Late 2025, we're looking at a capital projects review, to make sure that the construction and the different capital projects have the appropriate oversight. Next, kind of headed into 2026, as you know, we spend a good chunk of our internal audit department resources on our BIA over the last year. That BIA was noted in several different audits and third-party audits over the course of the last few years. They've made substantial process, they've made substantial process and improvements on that, and we will make sure that they continue to follow that, follow that up. That is a department-level process, so obviously, we have a lot of departments, and we'll make sure that they are consistent across the county. Succession plan of Fleet Services Analytics, and then, of course, late 2026, we'll redo this all again, as a part of our approved process for every three years. Again, you can see at the bottom there, we do all follow-ups every year, and then, of course, any additional requests. We reserve about 10% to 20% of our budget for different special projects that are presented to us, or asked to be performed by the audit committee, and ultimately, the Board of Supervisors. Many times, that money is used as we follow up on hotline requests, or other types of issues that the county faces in any particular year. Comments, questions, and/or ask for your approval on the three-year internal audit plan?
Any questions? Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through all of this, and this may be folded into each one of these categories, but one of the things that comes up a lot is auditing of grant money and grant processes. Is that, like, inside all of this? Is that a portion, or is that something that should be kind of a line item by itself?
So, we did a grant management review. I believe it was three years ago.
Okay.
If you remember correctly, there was significant, there was many more grants that have been coming in. That was a big process for us. There was a new person that was leading the grant management process, and so that was two or three years ago, and we looked at the process as a whole, not necessarily at any one specific grant, but how the process works. If there was a desire to audit or review any one particular grant, that is something that we would want to add to the internal audit plan and scope separately, consistent with our budget.
I have none specifically. It just, it does come up, and I will admit, I don't remember from three years ago. So, anyway, but that may be something we want to consider in the future.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. So, back to the grants. So, you say not a specific grant, so you look at overall grants. Could you say if you were to, and I don't want to, like, stir the huge pot, but if you were to look at the Sheriff's Department and look at the grants that come in there, and how that money is spent, would it be a specific grant you'd look at, or would it be all the grants that come in, because there are quite a few? How would you go about that, if you were to do, say, the Sheriff's Department?
Sure. Good question. We could scope it either way. So, just like any other audit, we break these audits, these projects, into the amount of time and scope that it would take. Obviously, if we were looking at every grant, that scope and the amount of time that it would take would be longer. If we minimized that scope and only looked at one in particular, then that would take, you know, less time and less hours.
So, if we were to ask for that, then we'd have to kind of pick out one or two grants to choose from, I guess.
My suggestion would be that we, you know, go through a process to determine, you know, which grants are the ones that would be similar in nature, or would be considered to be, whether that be by dollar amount, whether that be type, and then make those decisions based on the amount of hours that we want to spend, or the amount of time that it would take to do it.
Okay, so we could bring this up in the future, but not right at the moment?
Sure.
Okay.
Presumably. We, to be fair, I mean, we work at your, we report directly to the audit committee, and through the audit committee, to the Board of Supervisors. So, we're, we work in your direction.
I'm just trying to figure out, like, what specificity here I'm looking for, and I'm not quite sure what that would be yet, but I'd have to think about that.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, and to my colleague's point as well, I think we want to see all the grants, and then maybe we pick out some, or a portion, or whatever. And if I remember right, we do have a little flexibility as to reprioritizing some of this if we need to.
We do.
Okay. So, that might be something for the future.
If no more discussion, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number 10 as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Chairman, before we take the vote and tally that vote, there is a correction on data governance audit.
Yeah.
I believe it's supposed to be 2024.
Yes, thank you.
Well, the one you have highlighted?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll correct the motion to include approval of item number 10 as presented, but for 2024.
Item number two.
Good.
I guess I would second that.
Is that a satisfactory motion?
Yes, he stated "as presented," and Eric did clarify that it was 2024.
Okay, there was a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries. And then the last item from Mr. Groen, about silent whistle.
Yes, thank you. As you know, one of the responsibilities of the internal audit department is to have oversight of the silent whistle. Every year, we present all of the calls that came into the silent whistle, and it's the job of the Board of Supervisors to ensure timely and appropriate actions are taken as it relates to the silent whistle. So, as you've seen in this chart many times before, we break it out by month, and then we break it out by category. Here, you can see there was two in the other category, and there was eight in the non-actionable category. All of the things related to those items within the silent whistle have been closed. So, the important column here is the column all the way to the right, where you can see that there are no open issues.
For the, for the folks that are, wonder what you're talking about, explain silent whistle a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely. So, the silent whistle is our anonymous reporting hotline that is available to any constituent, or really, anyone that has a concern. That number is on the website. It is administered by a third-party. We then receive those complaints or those concerns. We have a group of folks here, including internal audit and management, that review that concern, and then we follow up on that concern and bring it to appropriate resolution.
And you're satisfied that those get handled correctly if they come in, that...
Absolutely. We have very strong representation from the entire management team, including internal audit, and we take them very seriously, and we follow up as appropriate.
Thank you. Steve.
Just another question. I don't know if this is relevant or not, but is there a duration, is there, like, how long does it take to resolve one of these issues? Is it a week, 10 days, a month, an hour? I don't know.
Great question. So, as you can imagine, we get all kinds of interesting things that come in, and I would say that, of course, it depends on the actual concern or complaint, but certainly, our goal is to respond to that complaint as timely as possible, and most of the time, it's well within a week to 30 days. Some of the ones that might take a little bit longer, maximum 60 to 90 days.
Thank you. Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, what's the routing? So, if you get a personnel complaint, what's the routing?
Yep. So, when you actually make a call, there's somebody on the other end that will ask a various set of particular questions, and that's exactly, that's actually administered by a third-party. That third-party provides that service for many, many entities, not just counties, but companies, and a lot of different, like I said, a lot of entities. There's, within that space, there's three or four companies that provide that service. We've been very happy with the, with the service that we've received. Again, there's a very standard list of questions that are asked. They then take down that information, and they actually email it to us. From that email, then, and again, completely anomalous, anonymous, we don't know who the person is, we only have the substantive piece of what they said. From there, we take that to our hotline committee. Again, it's made up of key members of management and internal audit. If, for example, there was something specific about one of the members of the committee, we would not include that person in that follow-up. So, we do make a determination as to who are the right people to look at this issue. We forward that along. We appropriately make sure that they follow up on it. If there's something actionable to do, we take action on it. We then compile that and send it back to the third-party administrator, and then, to the extent that they are able to reach back out to that person, they do. Very often, they do not leave, they do not leave us the opportunity to call them back, right, because that would be a phone number or an email address. So, but if they do, then they, the third-party then reaches back out to them to let them know the resolution.
Okay. This is information, only not, no vote. Is, did you get all the information out there?
I think we did.
Okay. Thank you.
Good idea. All I was going to say is, we have another member of our team that's with us. Nate Patton is here, a very experienced auditor. He's a manager with us now, and we're excited to have Nate on the team. So, you might see him in the future.
And also, just for the record, we also have the chairman of the Audit Committee here as well, Matt Busby. Did you want to have, have anything to say?
Yeah, I would just offer that the Audit Committee has been fantastic. We, they do a very detailed job of reviewing our work. They provide really good suggestions. As you know, each one of the Audit Committee members is appointed and serves, comes from each one of your districts, and I would just offer that we appreciate their support, their recommendations, and it's an essential part of the work that we do, and I would say thank you to them for it.
Steve.
Just another quick question. How many years have, we established this, what, four, five years ago?
I think we're going on closer to 10.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes, sir.
Time goes by as fast when you're having fun.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, it, we had, we didn't have a really strong structure before, and Mr. Lou and some county management established that, along with your help, I believe. And I like the fact that we have representation from the community out there that participates in that, and I've got good feedback from the participants and members of that Audit Committee back to the county, and thought it was a great idea as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Item number 12, hearing review and action on an appeal of a hearing officer's decision, Kevin Costello will announce why you're leaving.
Special counsel will be advising the board since, for this item, since our department represents the agency.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board, Scott Johnson, again, County Attorney's Office. This appeal has been on your agenda since September of 2022, and I'm happy to report that, in that year, after extensive meetings, conversations, and involvement with the applicant in this case, in fact, we had our final meeting, at least with regard to the code case, last week with them, we are going to be jointly asking with the property owner to ask this board to vacate the hearing officer's decision and close this case. Like I said, most of the issues, or all the issues have been resolved, and the issues that initiated this complaint was an access road and some parking issues. That road has since been paved, and access has been provided. The parking issues have been dealt with, and dust issues have been dealt with. And the applicant in this case, the property owner, has extended a lot of, a significant amount of money to continue a site plan review for the second phase of this project. I have conversed with Brent Billingsley, the Community Development Director, the manager of code compliance. Everybody seems to agree that the best course of action here is to close this case out and vacate the hearing officer's decision. I will note, this is a very good example of everybody kind of coming together to try to resolve these cases. The applicant in this case was very involved with us to explain their side. We were very involved, the county was very involved, to explain their side, and we were able to come to a resolution. So, from the County Attorney's Office perspective, I don't think this is the case to move forward with in court. I don't think we would, we'd have a very good case, and therefore, we are asking the board to vacate the hearing officer's decision, along with the applicant. So, that would close this case out. If any future code cases or code issues arise in the future, those could be dealt with, but this, this has basically been resolved.
Okay. Any, any discussion or questions? So, I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to vacate the appeal and dismiss the case.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries. Kevin Costello will now return. We'll go on to item number 13, and we have more public hearings than I've seen in my short time up here. The first one is Resolution 2023-SUP 00523. Sangita.
Sangita Deucer presenting the special use permit case. It's called Christiansen Recreation Field, SUP, SUP 005-23. The proposal is requesting a special use to operate a recreation field with seven recreation vehicles used for clamping kind of campsites on a nine-plus acre site in the GR zone. The location is about one foot mile northwest of Farrell Road and Stone Bluff Road, approximately 2.75 miles south of Maricopa South State Route 238 in Pinal County. The owner is Craig Christiansen, and the agent is Taylor Oll from Oll and Curly, PC. The size of this parcel is 9.06 acres. One can see the county map showing the location of this special use permit. It's on the extreme, I would say, western, west of Maricopa, the town of Maricopa, and it's shown by the red star. The vicinity map showing the location in a red square block. You can see the development on the eastern portion of this parcel, with very large... You can see the development on the eastern portion of this parcel, with very large parcels. Largely GR zone, and... This is the current zoning, again, zoomed down, showing the BLM land to the west portion of this project and the parcel. You can see on the eastern and north-south, all of that is GR and large parcels. Again, the area map showing the buffer where the, the, the project was shared with the property owners and requested for any kind of comments for this. Aerial map showing the green and texture, again, largely undeveloped. You can see a lot, a number of washes, and it is part of, it's, it's, the setting of this is at the foothill, I would say, of the Palo Verde Regional Park, which is proposed by the county on the western portion. And you can see that, that almost is kind of, kind of going forward in that direction, foothills of that. This is the site plan showing the project proposal. And the access from this, for this parcel is from the west Stone Bluff Road. The northwest portion of this shows a private residence. The proposal is requesting seven RV spots that are showing with an access road from the same Stone Bluff Road. You can see that it kind of turns around. There's a large wash which is going diagonally across from northeast to southwest, which is going to be protected, obviously, as part of this project. It has the circulation showing with 24-feet access. There is ADA compliant parking. There's an independent septic system, and the owners are going to be part of this project. They're going to be staying there. This is going to be a privately owned venture. Something like the hip camp, I don't, you know?
One septic to do all of those spots?
No, there are going to be seven for individual sites. And I will show you the details in this, and we've shared it also along with your staff report. It has been there. Each of this has a hookup, and then there's a central processing plant. And this has been reviewed by our Aquafer Protection Division.
Okay.
Some of the proposed landscape buffer, which is along, along the Stone Bluff Road, you can see it's almost like 40 feet of landscape, showing kind of a visual buffer. Some pictures taken along north of the road, along south, you can see the mountains. East, which is opposite of this parcel, and along west, and again, the backdrop of the mountains. Items for both considerations, the special use permit is going to be allowing an operation of a recreation field with a maximum of seven clamping sites on a nine-plus acre in a GR zone. Pinal County Comprehensive Plan shows the density for 0.1 acres, which complies with the recommended use. The requested use is similar to the use as planned in the regional park, which is proposed west of the parcel. It's a passive recreation use of the site. The property is accessed from Stone Bluff Road, which is the two ways in and out of the site. A 40-feet buffer along Stone Bluff Road, shown in the site plan prior, which acts as a visual buffer. After granting of the SUP, the applicant would be required to apply for a site plan process. And a lot of details in terms of materials for access and all of the things would be kind of detailed out in that level. To date, we, we received prior to the BNZ letters of support and two letters in opposition regarding the proposal. However, BNZ have recommended approval with 25 stipulations, and staff also recommends the same. And I'm open for any questions. We also have a presentation from the applicant. They're here. And at this point in time, if you would want to, I can share.
I think the average constituent may not understand all of these zoning codes like GR. We, we do because we, we work with it. So GR general rural, you would think that that would be agriculture. And here, they're actually going to be making money from hookups and rentals. Where does that stop? What if you want to do 50 hookups or 100? When does it cease to be rural?
So, in this case, is, as far as GR is concerned, GR allows, one, a special use permit. And with this special use permit, we are restricting the number to be seven only. There is a density which, it meets the density as far as the comp plan is concerned. And it also follows the use in terms of a recreation exactly the same way. Yes, I do understand that there is the component of the commercial angle. And under the SUP, there says, would be kind of monitored by the county as not exceeding the seven number of hookups. And it is not like a standard RV park, that it's going to increase the density or traffic that any other normal RV park would.
And I know Kent Taylor, the Parks Director, was here earlier. Did he have any questions that this might hurt the enjoyment of the park?
Oh, this has been reviewed by the, by the Open Space and Trails Division and the Director. A couple of restraints, the word that the applicant or the owner will not be able to have a direct access to the, the park from their side, which the applicant or the owner has agreed to. Access to the park is pretty closed by whoever visiting can easily go through the, through the formal access point for, to the park. So besides that, the other aspects of ensuring conservation zones, whether riparian area or the wash that goes through, there are restrictions on development of those areas where the applicant is going to be doing that. And it would be, as I said, detailed out at the site plan level.
All right. If, no more? Yes.
Can you put up the 25 stipulations so I can see those?
Would we have that?
Is it in the resolution?
Yes.
Let's see if I can pull that up. I can read it online better. Okay, you can proceed though, Chairman, if you'd like, and I'll go through these.
And just, just as a note while he's reading, I don't know how fast you're going to read there, Mr. Miller, but...
All right, go ahead.
Just to, the, this is about a quarter mile from the entrance of the park. At the park, there won't be power and sewer and water hookups. There's places to camp, but not that. This allows people with motorhomes or fifth wheels to come and park for a few days and hang out at the park, but not, but, and then just be quiet. And they won't be running generators because they're plugged in, so it's very quiet. I also understand that the two letters of opposition, I read about that. One was they were worried about it growing to a larger RV park, and they said, oh, then this is fine. They really weren't opposed to it.
Correct.
The other person, I believe, was also comforted in the fact that whatever was going on wasn't going to interfere with their lifestyle.
That's correct. Issues regarding noise and all of that have also been stipulated in the stipulations. There is restriction also of the number of days that they would be staying in this place the way we have for any campsites for parks.
Right. Thank you.
Which stipulation are you on, Steve?
I'm sorry?
I'm just wondering how far down the list you are.
Just, no, continue. I'll read.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm multitask.
Okay, maybe we could start hearing. Go ahead.
Thank you. And I'm looking at stipulation 15. It says the proposed site plan should have 24-foot paved ingress egress. And this is an SUP. If they, if they go out of business and leave the property, then there'll be a lot of pavement left over. What's the reasoning behind the pavement is just for dust, and could there be some other?
So basically, we, we look at safety, fire access. We do want the access road to be able to sustain that heavy loads. And obviously, the, the finer details in terms of what that paving is going to be would be determined by the county engineer at a site plan level. To the best of the ability where it does retain the, the rural kind of feel of this. And there are options that the applicant is looking into and working with the county for the same.
So you, you may not require pavement?
We would definitely require paved access. Now, what is the paving in terms of details is what I've said would be worked out with the county. ADA parking, yes, it would be paved.
And is there some other less expensive crushed stone or something that would support the weight of a fire truck and yet?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Look more natural?
Chair, I should board. Good morning, Gilbert again, Planning Manager. Just so we're clear, the focus of today's request and decision is, is on the use. We, we had a long conversation with the applicant and with the Planning Commission in regards to these additional details. And they're usually vetted out at the site plan process, not at this process. And we had worked with the applicant to let them know that whether we conway it or not, it's ultimately up to air quality and engineering team at that, at that level, which is step, the next step after this, if it's approved. So once again, we had, we put it on there just to let them know that it's a possibility, but it's not up to us. And typically, as you mentioned, there, there are more than common to accommodate safety and emergency services when they're called to the site if something happens. But that's, but, but that's pretty much it.
Okay. So the pavement stipulation could change later on to a?
Correct. Yeah, it's not determined at this level.
If, if we approve the SUP later, so it's going to be, it'll come up in there.
If, we're going to approve it, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I may. We're approving something with 25 stipulations. In my mind, that means these stipulations are hard and fast. Is it or isn't it?
So I believe it was written in a manner to let them know that it might be required. That one does not, and that's a great, great statement. Board Member Miller, but if you removed it, that's fine. But the reason it's on there is so, we have a lot of these smaller companies that come to us without knowing these expectations. And we've seen this where it's not fair to let, we, if they go into the process thinking that there's not going to be any pavement, and there is, it's a financial burden to them. And so that's essentially the only reason why it's brought up, mentioned. So if it does happen, we told them that that's part of a, a commercial business at times. Maybe it's not. But it was just us being proactive and letting them know that, and to be fair with all companies, that this does happen in some places. I believe Peralta Park also has some type of pavement treatment on their, on their roads for the county requirements. So just wanted to let them know that it's a possibility. So it was not meant to scare, just to inform. That was the only reason for doing it.
Maybe we could hear from the applicant and then have more questions at the end. So applicant, do you want to?
Is Sangita done?
She can come back, yeah. Maybe he can answer this, too.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the board. Happy to talk about those. We'll have a, a presentation. Let me mention, just respond to a couple of the questions that I heard right up front. Number one is that we will have, there's two septic tanks on site. One will be for the private residence, one is for the seven sites, but they each have individual hookups. So that'll obviously have to be analyzed. But, but effectively, we're able to have it in that one septic tank with the individual hookups on each site.
Yeah, we need to get your name for the record.
Oh, yes. Thank you. For the record, my name is Taylor Earl, a law firm of Earl and Curly. We're at 3101 North Central Avenue in Phoenix. So let me walk through here. We have, we are representing the Christiansen family. We have Craig and Chelsea who are here today. This is the type of use that is fairly minor, and it, it'll be probably no surprise to people in this room that sometimes people just do stuff like this, and they don't come through the proper channels and do it the right way. So we're really happy that they came to us. They said, we want to do this above board. We want to have it be fully permitted. And so they've been great to let us go through this process and make sure everything was taken care of correctly. Really kind of how this got started, too, with their family, this is where they're living. This is their primary residence. They will be living on this site. And as they went and took their RV around the country, they found that they could stay in these small, little quaint rural environments, not a commercial RV park, although they, they stayed in those, too, but to stay on somebody's property. And so that led them to want to do something similar here. And as was mentioned, we're right up against the, the park that's been approved for Palo Verde. This shows you exactly that literally we write, the site is right up against it. And, and so it's a great opportunity. It's a great location for this, for this type of use. Earlier, it was talked about the entrance. We did want to have a direct entrance from our site to the park, but as we understood, there's a fee entrance. That, of course, doesn't make sense. We don't want to rob the, the county of its fees so people can quickly go down and get right into the entrance from our site. These are some of the things that are within that park. And so as was sort of alluded to earlier, we have the ability for people to come, have a very quiet place to stay here, and then go do the activities at the park. And so this just shows some photographs we, we found. They kind of give a feel of when we say, keep that rural environment, that's, that's what we mean, is that people will be able to come and park, they'll have hookups. But we're not talking about a pool and a clubhouse and some of these other things you see at, at, at commercial RV sites. These are meant to be rural in their character. Here's sort of another one, gives you an example where the home, and then you have just a couple of, of spaces. So things to point out on the site plan. We agreed to a stipulation that says that the owners will be living on site. So they're not going to be renting it out and, and having this sort of operate without them there. This will be where they reside. Here's an individual site, just to show you how very simple that is. You have the hookups that are on the driver's side, and then you have a picnic table. And then there's a communal garbage area. There's, hookups will be for the amperage, be 30, 30 and 50 amps, which is common. Again, we don't have some of these other, other amenities you might see in commercial environments. Some of the controls, too, is, is, as you're sort of alluded to, this comes through a site, something like hip camp, where renters would get on and say, I'd like to stay there. And then they can make a reservation. And that allows the owners to vet people before they come. They'll have a renter history, and if it's not good, they don't, they don't come to the Christiansens' home. There's a focus here on, on having vehicles that are, that are newer, that are clean. Now, it's not stipulated that it has to be vehicles within this time. Be hard for the county to regulate that anyway, but that is the focus. We're having newer vehicles coming to the site that are clean and orderly. I won't go through all these, but it was also a question earlier about, well, what does GR allow? And so we put this list on here to help sort of give an understanding that GR is not like a single-family residential subdivision zoning. GR allows for commercial uses, commercial operations. Now, they're not meant to be full-blown shopping centers, but to have some degree of commercialization is common and is permitted within the GR. So you think, see things like there, like a farm stand could be, there athletic fields, a dairy. And so we think this is perfectly in line. Again, we're getting the SUP to add to the GR zoning. And, and you see kind of here, this is one of the comprehensive plan items. Consider providing linkages from rural residential areas to adjacent public lands if appropriate. Absolutely what's occurring here with the adjacent park. And so I'll just kind of jump through these, but I'm happy to go back to them. But this really does meet a lot of the, the components of the comprehensive plan. From compatibility, what we wanted to focus on is, it was alluded to also, no generators. They'll have electric hookups, really simplifying what we have in terms of amenities. No overhead lights. We have lights to demarcate the driveways, but they're going to be solar lights. We've agreed to a landscape area that would be, it sort of matches more or less what's across the street in terms of having a landscape zone. We know the neighbor across the street has that, and so we agreed to do that with native landscape materials. And you see that here. This is a conceptual plan, but it gives you a sense that we're, that we're focusing on those native materials. I did want to also talk about 15. This is the stipulation, as it's worded today. The proposed site plan should have 24-foot paved ingress egress, paved camping sites, paved parking. I do appreciate the staff saying, hey, it's, it's not absolutely controlling. We think that there's a better way to, to phrase that, to give direction to the site planning team. Because there are different applications that can be used. This is a, a proposal that we thought of. It would say the applicant slash owner should utilize decomposed granite or other dust control measures for the 24-foot ingress, ingress egress camping sites and parking. measures for the twenty-four-foot ingress egress camping sites and parking as approved by the county engineer." So we're making sure the county engineer has that discretion. And then it says, "Where possible, to preserve a rural and natural appearance, paving should be avoided." When we use words like "shoulds" and stipulation, essentially what we're sending is a signal to the technical team. And so the way that it's worded today, I think it could be misunderstood that the signal is, "We want you to pave it. It should be paved unless you can't." I think it's better to send a signal of, "Really don't want it to be paved unless it has to. If there's other ways that we can make sure that it can have the way, it can be erosion-controlled, it can be dust-controlled, we'd prefer to go that direction." And so this is the stipulation that we think addresses that, and we think would send a good message to the site plan team. And then the only other thing I'll just mention here, we did work with the planning commission on a stipulation. We just tagged on this word "as applicable" to the end of the stipulation, because it refers to some regulations we're not sure apply to this zone. And I just added that if we could just add the red word, so with yellow was already added to the commission, and if we could just add in the red, I think that would clarify what we hope to achieve at the commission, which was making sure that if it applies, it applies, and if it doesn't, because it's not the right zone, then it wouldn't apply. And so those would be the two changes we would ask for. In closing, we appreciate the time. We think that this is really the right location for this type of use. We think the applicant, they've really done a great job of agreeing to things that would constrain it, that would limit it. Their focus is to preserve a rural environment, but also to be compatible, not only with the neighborhood, but also with the park that's next door. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
I notice there's one member of the Christiansen family that's not here. Maybe he's against this, or is he for it as well?
I think he's for it, to the extent he understands it. Yeah, we really put this in there as that final clincher of, you know, "Don't do it for the Christiansens, do it for the little guy."
So he's got other things on his agenda today, I guess. Okay. Are there any questions? Any more for San Gita? This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this issue?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And I don't know if it's much of a question.
Close the public hearing. No, no, I'll close the public hearing and go back to Steve.
Closed?
Okay.
This dovetailing these twenty-five stipulations into your next step, which is the site plan approval, is-- turns to be very difficult for many applicants, because I've seen it for quite a while. So, and that bothers me. I mean, it worries, and I want flexibility in these stipulations. So I hope that your amendments to that, we can go forth with, if you're okay with that. I mean, I think that's one of the things that people run into after they get this zoning. Now, what do I do? And then the next step can be costly and time-consuming. So we want to try and smooth this out for you.
Supervisor, absolutely appreciate that, and I agree that sometimes that's where maybe the applicant doesn't understand what they're agreeing to, and then they get to the other side and realize the difficulty. So we have had a team that we've worked with, and I think that the clarifications that I've requested today will certainly help to achieve what we think is a desirable and needed flexibility.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, I will call for motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number thirteen with the amended language to the-- was it item fifteen of the stipulations? And I'm sorry, what was the other one?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. That was presented.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that clear enough? I'm seeing head shaking.
Are you good with that? No? There's Natasha's.
Can I refer to legal?
I mean, it was on.
I apologize, I was conferring with staff.
Okay, so just for clarity, Supervisor Miller, we are going to be approving the twenty-five stipulations with updates to stipulation fifteen and sixteen. We're taking those stipulations fifteen and sixteen from the applicant's presentation?
Correct.
Okay. So the recommended motion would be recommended for approval with twenty-five stipulations with the updates to stipulation fifteen and sixteen as presented by the applicant.
Correct. That's my motion.
So what she said and what he said, I second that.
Hey, we have a--
I think I used the word.
--motion and a second on the floor, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fourteen is another public hearing on resolution twenty-twenty-three, SUP zero-one-nine-two-three. Val Luhon. Brand-new presenter.
My name is Val Luhon. I'm with the Planning Division, and I'm here to present on SUP zero-one-nine-two-three. Some of the case details for SUP oh-one-nine-two-three. So it's a request from Vertical Bridge, and we're seeking-- they're seeking approval for a special use permit to allow the construction and operation of a new wireless communications facility. The parcel information is provided for you there, and letting you know that it is a Zon Suburban Ranch. Also, the street location is there, in an unincorporated portion of the city of Maricopa. The owner is Jason Lee Leddington. We do have his authorization on file. And the applicant is Jim Casiola of Vertical Bridge LLC, who is present and may entertain the board as necessary. Sorry about that. So we're providing you the county map to show you the site in the context of the full This map here shows the surrounding zoning context of the subject site, so we can see similar zoning around the immediate area. And then as we get further out, we see some suburban homeset and other zoning districts as well. This is the area map that's provided by our GIS team, however, providing you some additional aerials. So the one to the left shows the surrounding context, a bit zoomed out. And then a bit more zoomed in to the right is the subject site itself, and we can see that it does have a residence on it. We wanted to provide you some views of the site, so we're looking west onto the subject site, looking east off of the site, looking north, and then looking south. Providing you a map that shows our six-hundred-foot buffer for the notice-of-hearing purposes, which is our outreach area. Also, just showing you all that we have met all notice-of-hearing postings that is required by the applicant and staff for the large broadcasting boards and the smaller signs. Wanted to provide you an overview and a zoomed-in area of the site plan, so we can just see in the red that that is the property boundary, showing you the setbacks are met with that one-to-one, so with the height of the tower being one-fifteen, and then having the north and the west exceed that one-fifteen, one-to-one setback requirement. In the blue, you are shown the existing area for the residence, and in purple, that is where the proposed facility will be. Also, wanted you to provide you some visuals of what it may look like, the elevation and specs of the mono elm that is proposed. The coverage map, so this is what it looks like without the facility. With the facility, we see that coverage is greatly improved. So without, and then with. We wanted to make sure to address some of the continue-- or to let the board know some of the continuation concerns that were brought up by the P&amp;Z. So this case was first heard in the August P&amp;Z, and then continued to the September P&amp;Z. So one of the main concerns that was brought up by one of the commissioners was whether an SUP or invariance was more appropriate for deviating for some of those design standards. At the time of the August, I guess staff wasn't able to kind of fulfill what the commission was looking for in order to say that an SUP was the appropriate route to take. After that, we moved on to the September P&amp;Z, which at that point, we were able to prove and show that an SUP is the appropriate route when we are kind of looking at those design standards for wireless communication facilities. Avariance one is not the appropriate or legal mechanism that we would use for these types of reasons for a wireless facility. And so through the response that was provided to the P&amp;Z and the staff report, that goes over some more details and provides some references to our sections of our code that kind of go over as to why an SUP is more appropriate. Another concern was the height in regards to coverage and capacity. So staff felt that it was that what's viewed as excess height is intentional, because it does reduce the need for any type of future build. So given that it is one-hundred-and-fifteen feet, but with the design that is applied to it allows for future co-locations, so that way it does reduce the need for any type of other wireless facilities to be out there. Also, in conversation with the applicant, they were able to provide some coverage and capacity maps that kind of proved the reasoning as to why they are seeking that height, and in lowering it, how it does significantly reduce coverage for that area. So what they provided was this here. So the first one does show coverage at the proposed height, and even as we go down to the eighty-five feet, it does significantly reduce it. And they provided it at four different heights. So some items of consideration for this SUP is, one, that the coverage will increase significantly for the area, shall the SUP be granted. The tower is designed to allow future co-locations, again, reducing the need for any type of new facilities. The applicant has worked alongside with staff and has submitted all the necessary documentation required of an SUP. The staff did not identify any type of harmful impacts to the immediate area or the broader public. Applicant will comply with all development standards required of the SUP and wireless communication facilities, and the additional standards that are stated within the stipulations. We did receive one opposition prior to P&amp;Z. We have not received any since. That was regarding drainage and flooding concern from one of the neighbors. However, at the P&amp;Z, we did add a stipulation to ensure that grading and drainage requirements aren't met through the county formal site plan review requirements, which otherwise would be required of this process, because the next step is site plan review. But just to kind of put some ease with the commission, that was added as the sixteenth And so the Planning and Zoning Commission made the recommendation of approval with sixteen stipulations, having added that one in addition for grading and drainage. Staff is here also on that recommendation of approval. And I guess that's it. If you have any additional questions, I'm here to answer.
Are there any questions? So the applicant does not need to present?
No.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the issue? Hearing, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and go to Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As looking at these stipulations, here we have another tower out in the middle of nowhere, and they're requiring a CMU block wall fence, which we heard at last, I think the last meeting, we discussed about leaving a chain-link fence. I wish there was a little flexibility on this requirement, particularly in these areas that are out in the middle of nowhere. But anyway, and I know there's a residence there, but it just seems like this, the ability for the sheriff to be able to notice if somebody's in there. And then it does require power, because now it said there's a stipulation in here, if they were to get a generator, that they would have to come in and get another permit?
If it required it, yes, it would require separate permitting.
So does that power to it?
I'm not too sure if maybe my applicant is able to assist.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jim Casiola, representing Clear Blue Services out of Phoenix. Regarding the power, the standard site has a battery backup cabinet, which usually runs for about eight hours. They usually have a backup emergency generator on site, which is only utilized if the power's out for longer than an eight-hour period in order for the site to continue to operate and be available for people for 911, for police, for whatever other services they need.
So you will be adding a generator to it?
At some point, I believe they probably would like to put a generator, just because it's an additional security for any major outages that could occur, storms, or any other thing that would take us out for longer than an eight-hour period for power could be restored.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. So that's all I need for now. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, so to Mr. Supervisor Miller's point, so the wall there at that point, though, would be a sound buffer for the generator if that were the case, for the residents. It's going to hide the root structure of the giant tree standing there, I get it.
The pine tree in the desert. Okay, whatever. Any more discussion?
You didn't call me, so I guess you're good with it. If no more discussion, I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number fourteen as presented with sixteen stipulations.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Item number fifteen, another public hearing on case CSR zero-zero-eight-dash-twenty-three, Sinorama. We're ready.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. My name's Patrick Roberts, Senior Planner, presenting case CSR zero-zero-eight-twenty-three for McDonald's at Thompson. This is a comprehensive sign package amendment to allow fifteen signs with a total signage area of one-hundred-and-eighty-eight-point-one square feet on a commercial lot for a drive-through restaurant. This is an amendment to the original CSR zero-zero-one-oh-nine, which permits commercial signage but limits the available sign area to ninety-four square feet. The applicant is pursuing this amendment to allow signage consistent with the modern McDonald's brand preferences and to allow use of an electronic message board sign as a menu board sign. Location of the site is on the southeast corner of West Hunt Highway and North Thompson Road in Santan Valley. The applicant is Sinorama Chandler and Persona Signs, in conjunction with McDonald's Corporation, being represented by John Hyder. This is a map showing the approximate location of the site just south of Queen Creek in Santan Valley. The city map showing the surrounding zoning jurisdictions. An aerial map showing the commercial complex. And a zoomed-in zoning map showing the CB-one zoning and surrounding properties, the MR to the back of the parcel. This is the notification area that was used to broadcast reporting the size change. This is a site plan map the applicant has provided as part of this CSP package, showing the location of the site. This is showing those fifteen signs, two quantity of the pre-sell board prior to a menu board, double-arm gateway, in order here canopy sign, quantity of two, two menu board signs, three window position signs, which are exempted from signage, four wall arches, and then the twenty-four-inch word mark. This is the south elevation, looking onto the McDonald's here, showing the arches and the word mark sign. The north elevation showing the arches. The west elevation showing primarily the drive-through directional signs, pickup window one and two, and pay here, and another arches. And the east elevation showing another arch. This is a graphic showing the construction of the pre-sell board specifically, that are being utilized as electronic message board signs. Again, our code does not permit those, which is why this is being brought forth to the Board of Supervisors. Any request to utilize electronic message board signs requires Board of Supervisors' These are the menu board signage, signs they would like to utilize. Again, there'll be two quantity of these items, one for Again, there will be two quantity of these items, one for each drive-through lane, and two quantity of each pre-sell board, which will utilize prior to this menu board sign, one per drive-through lane.
So those pictures right there you're showing, is that changing the current one to this next one?
These are, this is included in the CSP package, but these are existing monument signs that were permitted under CSR 00109.
Okay. So the next picture is?
This one?
No, the next one.
The secondary monument that's on the Circle K site.
Okay. It's currently there?
Yes.
Okay.
This is an image looking north on the property. South on the property. East and west. So some items for consideration. This package was previously approved under a previous commercial project for CSR 0109, which presented commercial signage options for businesses operating in this area. I believe prior use intended for the site at the time of the CSP approval was for a Chase Bank. Per CSR 0109, the total amount of signage permitted is 94 square feet of area. The applicant's current request includes 188.1 square feet of signage, as described in the package, and utilizes electronic message boards, which are not permitted under the sign code or the existing CSR, which is requiring VOS approval. The applicant is currently undergoing site plan formal review for the McDonald's project with signage contingent upon approval of this case. Staff reckons approval of CSR 008-23 is presented with one stipulation, as brought forth by the Sign Review Committee. At this time, staff will be happy to answer any questions, any additional questions.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
So on the sign code where it's not permitted, the electronic board, is that in the new code that may someday come to fruition?
The new code is...
Mr. Billinkley knows.
Brent's going to come up here and discuss it, but no, it's under the current code. That electronic message boards are not permitted.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McClure, to answer your question, the sign code has been completely rewritten in the draft that we're working, but the provision that electronic message boards will come to the board is still in there because that was a board request. So that's why it's in the current code and in our new rewritten code that maintains the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Clarity?
Clarity.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
So we still don't permit message boards? Message board signs are not permitted, and under the revised code that we're going to adopt soon, it'll still not be permitted. Is that how I understood that statement?
Without our approval.
It'll still require our approval?
Yes, sir. My understanding that has been delivered down from above is that the board wants all electronic message boards to come to them for their approval. I will not be able to approve it from a staff perspective. Now, keep in mind that the new code has a lot of process to go through, including public comment, planning and zoning, board hearings, et cetera. But as it stands, the rewritten code requires electronic message signs to come to the board.
And help me, because I don't remember, when did the board send that message down to who's ever writing the code?
Supervisor Miller. I wasn't here at the time when that decision was made, but I was told that was a board...
Been here 10 years, and I don't remember it.
Board decision, so.
Okay.
Think it had to do with lights and flashing and how much they flash and how large they are and where they can go, that the board wanted to have a say in that.
We'll talk about that later.
Anything else? Okay. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to weigh in on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, we need another McDonald's out there anyway, so that's good.
With your car...
Gives us another stop, so.
With your car...
With all the houses that are being built, right?
Good.
Get her done. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 15 with one stipulation.
Second?
Second.
Yeah, that's all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that carries. Item number 16, public hearing on ordinance number 2023, PZ 040-23. And this will be Glenn Back, President. And we're going to do 17 together as well, but separate votes.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board members. PZ PD 013-23 and PZO 4023, otherwise known as Hancock Homes, is a request to rezone from GR to C2, 9.32 acres, and the remaining 18.43 acres to allow mixed-use development plan, as well as approval of a plan area development on the 18.43 acres. The overall size of the total is 27.74 acres. This is located west of Hunt Highway and south of North Stone Creek Drive in the Santan area. VTLG Hunt Highway Land Company is the applicant. This shows you the general area. More zoomed in here with the two cases and the surrounding environs. Here is a recent aerial photo showing the property. And the buffer, 600-foot. This is a conceptual site plan here, so you would have that northern portion there, that eight and some change acres left as commercial, and then the remaining to become this housing open space plan. You have a central amenity in the western portion there. And here's some elevations of what these housing units would look like. Couple different styles. And here's would be the clubhouse there with that central amenity. This is looking generally to the northwest from the subject site, looking south, east across Hunt Highway, and then here's the, looking to the west with the posting. So items for the board's consideration, the applicant has made a number of modifications to the original product design to help with public concern. Multifamily is generally lacking in the Santan area, and another thing to consider is multifamily and commercial do generate large volumes of traffic and potential noise, which will impact the roadways. And the proposed will only build one-story-type units. So staff's recommendation for PZO 4023 with one stipulation for approval, and for PZ PD 013-23 also for approval with 15 stipulations, as noted in your staff report. And staff would be happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
Are there any questions? So I don't see any, no presentation. If not, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to weigh in on this? Go ahead. We have one coming up.
Go ahead. You go first.
You want to go first?
Yeah. We make the...
I do.
Chairman, Board Member Sean Lake here on behalf of the applicant. You guys are well aware of this project, so I'm not going to go into it. Needless to say, Gary and I have been outside talking, and we've been talking for over a year now. And we, long, long time. We've come to an agreement. We think we have a good project to present before you, so we would hope you support it. Other than that, I got a 30-minute presentation I can go through with, I think, 150 slides, but we can do that if you prefer.
That sounds like fun.
Thank you.
Gary Maudlin, 30262 Bismarck, Santan Valley. Chairman Surti, Vice Chair McClure, gentlemen of the board. As you noticed, there are no black shirts out here today like there was a few months or back in November or thereabouts. This is a classic example of a community working with the developer to come to a conclusion that is equitable for both. And those of us that have been working with Sean, we think this is fantastic. We've been able to reserve almost nine acres of commercial space right out in front that will be, at some point in time, a very viable retail area for those down in that area. This development is completely different than another one that's going on that impacts Hunt or Gary Highway and Hunt called Stella. That's 312 apartments, nine buildings, three stories tall, bunch of two-story-tall apartments that absolutely no community input was allowed. It was all passed by the planning department, never came through planning and zoning, never came to this board for approval, but yet they're building. And even then, there was the 300-foot protest letters from 80% of the residents within that 300-foot area that was delivered. I believe you all got a copy. I know the planning department got a copy. I know that the county attorney got a copy, but once again, no input from the community. This development here, again, a classic example of folks working together to come to something viable that makes sense. Any questions? Me. Thank you.
Okay, Mike.
First, I'm going to close the public hearing.
If that's everybody, the public hearing is closed. Back to Mr. Goodman.
Mr. Chair, first of all, if one of our staff members could meet with Gary right after this and help them understand that there was public input, but it was years ago when that particular property got its ability to do what it's doing, the one neighboring, okay?
That issue is not on the agenda for today.
No, I understand.
Since staff...
Okay. But I was given, I was asking, well, I can do that later if you want, but I was given direction to staff. But the other part is, to Gary's point, this is a prime example of our supervisor, McClure, spending time and helping with the developer, address two needs. One of them was more apartments, but then the other biggest need is we are lacking in commercial property, and we have a lot of retail leakage. Those two items were addressed in this particular item. And so I commend the neighbors, and I commend our supervisor and Hancock Homes in taking the time and effort to work this through. So I appreciate that. To Gary's point, this is a prime example of the community and everybody working together to make it happen.
I just, I just say thank you, and I know we sat in my office and basically came to a handshake agreement over this property, and it's adjusted a little bit, and here we are.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, we're on number 16. I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 16 as presented with the one stipulation. Thank you so much. I caught that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we need a motion on number 17.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 17 as presented.
Second.
With 15 stipulations.
Are we good? I'll second that.
Now you can second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that one passes.
I just used the pregnant pause there to get Natasha to kind of shake a little bit.
Number 18, a public hearing discussion of 2023, SUP 017-23.
Good morning again, Board of Supervisors, County staff, members of the audience. My name is Val Luhon. I'm presenting on SUP 017-23. So similar to the other, this is a SUP request seeking approval of a special use permit to allow the construction and operation of a new wireless communication facility by Jim Cassiola, a vertical bridge. Some parcel information is there for you. It is zone general rule. We have the street location for you in an unincorporated portion of here, the town of Florence. George Nicewander, we do have his authorization on file as the owner of the parcel. Applicant is present, shall any questions of him be necessary. Again, providing you the county map that shows the site within the context of the county, showing just a little further out of Florence. Some of the immediate zoning and surrounding zoning context. The area map that's provided by our GIS team. And then providing you some aerials of a closer description of the surrounding context, and then zooming in onto the subject site, where we see there is a residence located. Providing you the directional, so looking east onto the subject site, looking west, looking south, and looking north. Showing you the extent of our outreach for the notice of hearing purposes. Letting the board know, as far as notice of hearings, we did meet all of the requirements with the large broadcast sign and staff providing support of the smaller yellow signs. Again, pulling out from the full site plan, letting you know what it will look like, so the red does indicate the property lines of the parcel. Setbacks, again, meeting that one-to-one for height. The height of the facility would be 115, showing that all the setbacks are met in every direction. Circling for you the existing residence area, and then in purple, where the proposed facility will be. Again, just details of what it will look like. A coverage map showing the area without this facility. How the coverage will increase with the facility. So without, and then with. Some items of consideration, again, similar to the other that we saw, is that the coverage will increase significantly for the area, shall the SUP be granted. It is designed in a way to allow for future co-locations, again, just ensuring that we can reduce the need of any type of additional facilities being added to the area. The applicant did submit all necessary documentation required of the SUP process. We didn't identify any type of adverse impacts. And the applicant is to comply with all development standards of the SUP and wireless communication facility process and the additional standards that are stated within the stipulations. We didn't receive any new opposition, but at the PNC level, we did receive two. One of them was regarding harmful emissions and radiation concerns from cell towers. We did want to note that within our code, it is stated under wireless communication facilities that they must abide by all standards and guidelines set forth by the FAA and FCC, which does include RF exposure standards that are permissible. And within the stipulations, it is stated that within the 30 days of VOS approval, the applicant must provide RF engineering certification validating this information. The second opposition was in regards to what's perceived as disturbance to the rural nature. So staff does acknowledge the desires of the neighbors who want to kind of maintain that type of environment. However, we do see, one of the lens that we do look at for projects as such is that concerns for health and safety of the areas, particularly safety with this, with this facility now going up. We can see greater use and enhanced coverage for emergency calls from, for that area. And we also see that a tower at this height offering future co-locations in a way, in a cell design, in a way that when more equipment does go on these sites, that is, that it is kind of concealed, that it still allows for, that it reduces the need for additional towers in that area while also maintaining and keeping in the rural environment. And so with that, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation of approval with the 15 stipulations that were provided to you. Staff is in keeping of that approval, and I'm here for any further discussion as necessary. Thank you.
I just have a general question. We're getting pine trees today. I know that in urban areas, you get palm trees. Are there any other, any others out there that you can mask one of these with?
I believe our... I believe our code, I'm, it's skipping my mind right now, but we call for, we ask for a self-design. I forgot the three that are in there. So it's a cactus, a monopine, and a monopalm. This one is a mono elm, and just in discussion with the applicant to kind of meet their objectives, but also in the future, as we kind of see the area further being developed and kind of, this is the best way to kind of mask any future type of equipment, so we don't see all of these different things kind of just sticking out. So we feel that this type of design allows that to, like, the most optimization to meet the client's goals and then also to kind of conceal and keep with the, with the area.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, this is the public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on this? Hearing, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 18 as presented with the 15 stipulations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any ayes have it?
Thank you.
Item number 19, this, another public hearing, approval, disapproval of 2023, IUP-003-23 regarding Lucid Motors. Larry Mason, another new presenter.
Hello, Chairman Sertie, Vice Chairman McClure, board members. My name is Larry Mason, Planner, Development Services, to present IUP 00323. This is an industrial use permit request to operate an EV battery testing and storage facility on a portion of a 480-acre parcel. This property is located north of East Penal Air Park Road, one and a half miles east of I-10. The owner is Penal County. The applicant is Lucid Motors. This is located, as you know, the Penal County Air Park is located at the southernmost border of the Penal County boundary. Closer here, you can see the vicinity map of the size of this parcel, 480 acres. This is the notification boundary. And this is the existing zoning. I'd like you to keep this, this map in mind when we move to items of consideration. This parcel is, is zoned both Activity Center and I-3. You can see to the east, there's I-2, some state land to the north, I-3 to the west, some state land to the south as well, and RV Park and general rural zoning. This property was rezoned in 2018 to make the air park more competitive precisely for applicants like these. Here's an aerial map of the entire boundary. Some of the graded area toward the center will be the site of, of this request. And here's the site plan to sort of give you something in your mind of what will be added to. Here are all the legal requirements that were posted. This view is to the north. This would be the access to the subject site. This is south. Recall the general rule in RV Park zoning and state land to the south across East Penal Air Park Road. This is to the east, coming from the I-10. And here's the air park. Recalling that map, the zoning map, the use is compatible with the existing parcel and surrounding area. I talked about Activity Center and industrial 3 zoning. You might think to yourself, well, what would be the purpose of this IUP? The reason we are requesting an IUP in, in already industrial zone property is because of the fire risk due to the testing of the battery packs. The comprehensive plan designates this parcel both high intensity Activity Center and employment. There is legal access, and the applicant has met all the requirements and held their neighborhood meeting on July 12th this year. Staff recommends approval with nine stipulations, stipulations to follow. And if, Mr. Chair, Board of Supervisors, if you have any questions, I'd love to address them.
Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For clarification, this is actually a lease. We're leasing this to Lucid?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Miller, yes, the lease, to my understanding, is not completely finalized. I'd like you to note, stipulation four, we are attaching this IUP alongside that lease.
It's Penal County property?
That's correct.
And we're leasing it to Lucid?
That's correct.
And Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Miller, go ahead.
Because it has owner Lucid, but it's, I guess if you're leasing it, then you have the same responsibility as an owner? I'm looking at Mr. Costello.
You, you have similar responsibilities to an owner. They would be, once they lease the property, if that goes through, then they would be responsible for the conditions on the property as the tenant who has possession of that property.
So we have another action on this in the future?
And Mr. Chair, I understand the lease is a five-year with two, three-year options on it. So, I mean, I'm looking at stipulation four, and I think there's an overreach of the P&amp;Z Commission, and I think it should just be left to the end of the lease. I mean, there's no reason to have the P&amp;Z say, oh, it can only be five years. That's too restrictive.
Mr. Chair, Supervisors, should we need to change this? Staff is happy to do as the supervisors please on this.
Okay. So no presentation, but this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to weigh in on this?
Mr. Chair?
There's a presentation.
I believe a member of the Lucid team would wish to speak.
Okay, let's hear from them.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Seth King. I'm a land use counsel with Lucid Motors. My address is 7373 Gateway Boulevard in Newark, California, 94560. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm here today with Ryan Phipps, who is a, our planning and engineering technical expert with Kim Lee Horn. He and his team are responsible for a lot of the technical detail that's in the application before you today. And just wanted to make a couple of brief comments to you today. We do support the recommendation before you today. I appreciate the Vice Chairman's comments regarding stipulation four and the duration of the permit. We actually made that testimony to the P&amp;Z Commission that we believed that the life of this permit should be consistent with the life of the lease, which, as, as mentioned, would be, under the current proposal of the lease, would be 11 years if both of the extensions were exercised. We continue to believe that that makes sense, so we would support a amendment to that stipulation to have that run for, again, the permit to run consistent with that lease term. And otherwise, we support the recommendation in front of you today. We ask that you adopt this, this recommendation and approve IUP 00323. From Lucid's standpoint, we are a proud member of this community. We really value our partnership with Penal County, and we're excited that this project would give us an opportunity to expand that partnership, even if it's in just a small way. We have been looking for a new battery test site for a while now. We're currently doing this testing in California and in New Mexico, and we believe that this location at the air park really is, is quite suitable. It's one that's accessible to our AMP1 facility and our battery storage operations over on Hannah Road in Casa Grande, but at the same time, is also a very remote site. So we're not going to be in a location, we're going to be interfering with, with lots of neighbors around. We also would note that this is a formal, former materials testing site. Vector Rocket was, was at that location. So we think that sets out a good track record that this activity can be conducted here in a way that's, that's controlled and that's compatible with the surrounding uses. And then just a couple of brief comments about the use and how we would be using the site. It would be, as mentioned, for battery testing and limited for battery, also for battery storage. It's not going to be a high-activity site. We would only anticipate conducting about four tests a month at the full peak of our operations, so this certainly is not like a daily use site for us. The tests would only be in the daytime, and in order to maintain the controlled environment, they would only be occurring if wind speeds are at 15 miles an hour or less. The tests are conducted outdoors, and they're on a, an existing concrete pad. There's, there are protective features there. There'll be fire suppression equipment on site as well. We have a complete safety plan that we prepared. That's part of the record that's been submitted before you. And leading up to this, we've coordinated with the air park and with the Army, who has, of course, operations out at the air park, and we've also coordinated with the Fire District there. And the Fire District is satisfied with what we're proposing, subject to us improving the roadway there to be 24 feet wide, and we're happy to, to be doing that. On the battery storage side, I would just note that the, the battery storage is going to be very short-term in nature. There will be only a limited number of batteries and battery packs that would be stored here, and that storage is really just accessory to the testing. It's not like this is just going to be someplace we're going to go stash batteries before we, you know, put them in cars or anything. It's, it's, they're only going to be stored there, you know, for the purpose of then being tested on site. And of course, that storage is going to have to comply with the International Fire Code, and that's one of the stipulations there on the list today. In addition, we are also obtaining site plan approval and an air quality permit, both from Penal County and then also working on a lease. So there, there are several more opportunities that this, this project's going to get looked at by the county. So I think with that, I'd, I'd wrap things up. I'm happy to answer any questions, or we can call Ryan up if you have any technical questions.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this item. Seeing then, I'll close the public hearing, go back to the board. Any more questions or discussion? And I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item...
19.
19, thank you, 19, and remove stipulation four. So minus stipulation four. Or do you want me to have it be restated, the IUP exists until the termination of the lease?
It's okay to remove it, isn't it?
What works for you, Mr.?
Supervisors, Chairman Supervisor McClure, I think it would be good to have a term in there. It could be that the term of the permit is issued commensurate with the term of the lease, and that makes them run together.
I move, then, that we approve item 19 as presented by restating stipulation 14, that the IUP runs commensurate with the terms of the lease.
Yes.
Second?
Okay, I heard a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any ayes have it? Item number 20, public hearing, resolution number 2023, SUP 004-23, and this one is another wireless facility.
Mr. Chair, Board members of SUP 00423 is a request for a special use permit to continue to maintain a wireless communications facility. It's on just over a half an acre north of Guadalupe Road and west of Ironwood Drive.
Is it a pine tree or a palm tree?
It's neither. It's a monopole. It's, it's been out there for quite a while. Here's your general location. It's in that industrial area, just east, southeast of Mesa. Here's an aerial that shows you the industrial nature, the surrounding area. And here's a, the site plan of the site. It's 75 feet from each property line, so exactly centered on the site. Here's the elevation showing the, the current facility. They are proposing to, after approval, enclose it with a block wall. And this is looking north, east with the site posting, and then northwest, you could see the pole in the distance, and also looking south. Now, this is from the original site plan from 2002. So, yeah, it's been out there for over 20 years. Items of consideration, continued coverage needed for the area. It's been out there since 2002. No traffic impacts and no letters of opposition. So staff recommends approval with the 17 stipulations you have in your staff report. And staff would be happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
Are there any questions? This is a public hearing. Does anyone like to comment on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 20 as presented with 17 stipulations.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any ayes have it? Item number 21, public hearing to save an aquifer. Number 1101123-CD, a tool.
Supervisor Sertie, members of the board, I think I'm back for the third time with respect to this item. Initially, you opened the ability for us to take a look at our, our fee structure with respect to our delegation agreement with the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality with respect to our aquifer protection fees. The second meeting was a work session with the board, and a presentation was provided at that date. After that presentation, then we had to meet the state-required advertising requirements, et cetera, with respect to this. It's a little bit different for, for a fee study update in that we have to post the draft fees for a month on the county website in addition to the 15-day notice that has to be provided in, in papers of, of general circulation. We have complied with those things. The, the key things to bring forward to the board once again today is the last time these fees were updated was in 2001. This particular department is underfunded and has to be supported by the general fund on an annual year because they do not generate enough revenue to pay for the costs of, of the individual division. We're short by about a quarter of a million dollars a year with respect to this division. These fees are coming forward due to a delegation agreement that we have with the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. That agreement is EV120061 to perform these services. We had to comply with the requirements of ARS11251.08, which we have. I think I mentioned at the last meeting that, that in order to be a little bit creative, we started this process under ADQ's previously existing fee schedule. And once again, these are deferred responsibilities on the county. So what we're bringing forward as our proposed, proposed fee schedule is the fee schedule that ADQ had in place when the study was conducted. I, I think I mentioned in our last meeting that ADQ's done a new fee study, and they've increased their fees as of August the 4th this year. So this fee schedule being proposed today is the previous ADQ fee schedule to make it a little less expensive on, on the applicants. The new fee schedule is actually 29% higher than what we're proposing today. So if an applicant was to choose to go through ADQ, they would pay 29% more than the fee schedule that, that we're proposing. If approved, the fee schedule will go into effect in December based on the requirements following decision of the board today, and we had not proposed an emergency. One of the things that's been discussed by staff is all applications that are received prior to that, prior to that date would be processed under the existing fee schedule because there's a lag time, obviously, for review and permitting. If you have any questions, I stand ready to, to address them.
Mr. Chairman? A point of clarification. Brent mentioned the compliance with 11251.08. Since these fees could possibly be assessed against a business, it, they also staff complied with 11251.13. I just wanted the record to reflect that.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brent, the now new, the new fees, we put them in place, how close does that get us back to even for revenue to the department? Just on an average year, if we process approximately the same number of permits?
That's the key statement. If, assuming we... If, assuming we process the number of permits that we're currently processing, the department will more than, than pay for itself and give us an opportunity to have some additional funding for equipment or additional employees. We're under a tremendous workload now. I don't remember what that cutoff was, but if development slows down...
I understand, that's a math problem, but you might...
Then, we'll, we'll still have a, a math issue, but yes, we'd be in good shape if, if we continue forward with our current rate, or even somewhat moderately reduced. Correct.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address it? Seeing then, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 21. Do I need to add, you, you're good on that? Okay. Number 21 as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Number 22, another public hearing for abandonment of an easement. Celeste, or Joe.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Supervisors. Yeah, not Celeste, Joe Ortiz, Development Services Managing Director. Here to present a request for an abandonment of Greasewood Street. This is between Holmes Road and Barclay Road. This is the far northeast of Patchy Junction area, Section 13, T1 North, Range 8 East. The requested abandonment came through James and Laurel Hoskins, which actually owned the adjacent parcel, which is parcel number 122053A. And the request is for future single-family residents at that site and trying to expand on that envelope. So staff did go through the process for abandonment and determined that legal and physical access to all the surrounding parcels won't be compromised or impacted by the abandonment itself. They also found that there is no current county maintenance of this road, and we don't have any plans in the future to maintain this site either. The physical characteristics just don't end well. The petitioner did contain, obtain all 100% of the adjoining property owner's signature as required, and we also did our diligence with the surrounding utilities, and there was no objections to that abandonment request. Couple pictures to show you, just a localized map. The hatched area in purple is the location of the requested abandonment. You can see that it ends at the Tonto National Forest on the east. And that's the current condition, looking east, and you have the Superstition Mountains in the background. And this is looking south at that intersection. Looking north. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions? Don't see any. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to save this easement? Looks like no. So I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 22 as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Passes. Number 23, request for future agenda items. I have one, and then I'll go to others. Something that's been looming over us for years now is the, about hand counts and elections. And Court of Appeals just came out with a ruling. I would like, as soon as possible, as soon as meeting as possible, probably by the 15th, to have Attorney Jenner, Attorney Kent Volkmer address this. They've been communicating with us, but a lot of the people need to hear this, and perhaps by the time this gets agendized, there could be some other rulings as well. So would really like to get that on as soon as possible. Anyone else?
I'll just echo that.
Yes. Okay. We're going to take a break at 12:30. We're not there. So we actually got through all those public hearings faster than I thought we would. So I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session, but we'll need like a 10-minute break before we actually get in there, so. Is there a motion to go to executive session?
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in executive session. Can I have a meeting to go back in? Come out of, out of executive session?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No, we're adjourned.